Morning and welcome to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for May 19, 2020. I'd like to remind us that we're still under the restrictions of the governor mandates, no more than 10 persons gathered in one place. And as such, the public may watch the meeting from the jury room on the third floor or at www.wangov.com. Those wishing to speak during the public comment session will be asked to wait in the jury room until escorted to the meeting by a deputy. I'd also like to say this morning that we need to -- Commissioner Gurley is not going to be able to be with us. He does have a doctor's appointment today. We continue to pray for his recovery. And I also want to say at this time that -- oh, I forgot. I needed to say, also remind our commissioners again about our summer dress. You do not have to wear a tie during our summer months, but if you want to do like Commissioner Acoff and say, "Look, I'm sitting in Commissioner Jean Bell's seat. He always wore a tie," then Mr. Acoff is an exception. So we appreciate that. So at this time, we have the invocation by Commissioner Acoff.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Bar heads. To God and Father, thank you for today. Thank you all, you many blessings. We ask that you be with us today as we make the decisions for the citizens of Wayne County that we think are processed through and try to make the best decision and the right decisions. We also need to remember our first responders, our health caregivers during this time of the virus. Also be with our men and women in uniform. We are a military family in Wayne County. Be with our military personnel that's deployed all over the world. We ask that you be with the leaders of our state to make the right decisions and the leaders of our nation to make the decisions in this very trying time. We also would like to remember the Gray family, the New Hope community, for the loss of a very special person to them. And we also would keep Commissioner Gurley in our prayers. We wish him a speedy recovery and be with his family. Just be with all of the citizens of the county, keep them safe. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Acoff.
I also wanted to mention real quickly that we're -- again, we're glad to have Commissioner Worrell with us. I know that you've been through a pretty good orientation the last few weeks, so you know, you hit the ground running whether you wanted to or not, right?
That's right.
Good to have you with us. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from May 5th of 2020. If you've read those, if there's any deletions or changes that need to be made.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from May 5th. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, it's unanimous. Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have two changes we would like to recommend for the agenda at this time. Number one is under special presentation. If we could take out number two, presentation from GWTA Executive Director Dom Willis on fair increases. They are not ready at this time to make that presentation, and so we'll remove that. And then we need to add, under consent agenda, number four, motion to approve wages application for the COVID-19 CARES Act grant. And this is funding that they need for that. And also, we need to add, after our budget work session, the setting of a public hearing for June 2nd for the Wayne County fiscal year budget.
Okay. And our 1 o'clock budget work session is going to be sorted by ear?
Yes, sir. It's kind of be fluid. We also have Davenport that will be here as well and kind of give us an update on our financial situation of where we're at, especially during all this time of COVID and moving forward.
Did the commissioners have any changes to the agenda? Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Okay, have a motion to approve?
With the changes.
With the changes. Okay, with the changes. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt?
First, we have an update on open broadband from CEO Alan Fitzpatrick. Is he here? We do not have Mr. Fitzpatrick here. Hopefully, he will be coming. You know, there's a lot of work that's being done by open broadband, especially with the remote learning that we're having with our kids, and there's also some grant opportunities. So hopefully, he'll be here today and we'll be able to talk about that. Since we're not doing number two, number -- the second on the agenda is motion to approve 2020 EMS Week proclamation. And Dave Cutterback, who is our EMS director, will be reading that resolution and proclamation. If you got it? Yeah, he does.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for putting some time aside for us today. Week started off a little tough, but it is still EMS week. We supported the Gray family yesterday, as we will continue to do so. Jason is one of our paramedic supervisors. He's a team member of ours, a family member of ours, and we will continue to support that family during this time. It is EMS Week, EMS Week proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill the gap of providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas emergency medical services systems consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme "Ready Today, Prepare for Tomorrow," we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion. We have submitted proclamation.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the 2020 EMS Week proclamation. Is there any discussion or comments?
Just thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Not only your people, but all the other volunteer agencies and all that was mentioned in this is all about a part of our staying healthy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do, your front line. We have a -- any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the 2020 EMS Week proclamation, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, last week, they came to get me and looked after me, and Dave was kind enough to come out to the hospital, make sure that I got home. I most appreciate it.
Most definitely. That's going outside of the norm.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Not for David, no.
Well, I know, but I'm saying that's what Wayne County does. That's what Wayne County EMS is all about. Okay. All right.
Thank you. Next is we have approval of the agreement between Wayne County Board of Education and Wayne County with respect to emergency shelters. I do want to thank Aaron. I want to thank also our attorneys as well. We basically have had agreements with the school system in verbal, but they've never been in writing. So Aaron has done an incredible job of really coordinating this with the Board of Education and their staff as well. So with that said, and now being pre-hurricane season, I'll let Aaron go with the agreement for you.
Good morning, gentlemen. So somehow, I'm getting credit for a lot of other people's actually hard work during this. When I first started, one of the things, the big concern, was shelters. But with the school district, our attorneys here, as well as DSS Health Department facilities, we went through, got all the verbal agreements that we've had in the past, and finally put it down on paper and made some improvements. The work that we've done, we now have six shelters, two in the northern part of the county, central part of the county, and southern part of the county, three primaries, two secondaries to move forward. So a lot of work went into finally getting these verbal agreements down on paper. So we'll have something going forward for the next five years for this one. So we're going to be -- the schools have agreed to let us use their facilities as emergency shelters during any type of disaster, usually used during hurricane season. We'll have school support for the first initial feedings and openings, and then we'll have DSS and Health Department folks in there taking care of the shelter population and along with Sheriff's Department and Goldsboro PD and the other police departments providing security. So and then running everything out of the emergency operations center just in case they need anything. So there's still a little bit of tweaks and adjustments that do need to be made to this agreement, so it's not a final approval until we get it through county manager, board of elections, and the leadership teams here. Going forward, we've got a good plan, and keep saying, now it's finally on paper. The second part of the agreement is something that I've been working on with some help from county agencies regarding the 2020 hurricane season. As of right now, we are taking the coronavirus into account and how we can do emergency operations more safely. We do have the luxury over at the Jeffries Building that it's three stories, we have three conference rooms on there, we can spread out emergency operations a little bit better. So if it's not noted here on the plan, emergency operations will continue as normal. This plan has not been finalized well, so when -- here's some feedback from municipalities as well as North Carolina Emergency Management. So I'll hope to have this done by the end of the month before hurricane season officially starts. Any questions?
And again, as Aaron said, I think there's still some minor tweaks that will not change the schools or anything, but just some minor issues with feeding and maybe some cafeteria workers that the school system and our attorneys will work out for the final agreement. So if you are so inclined, we would ask that you approve this contingent upon final approval by a county attorney.
Okay.
Has the schools actually already agreed to do it?
They had, and they had submitted one change that is going back and forth between Andrew and their legal. So they have seen this, they made one minor change towards the back, and that was it, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Just thank you for giving in writing, because, you know, we've been burnt before with this verbal stuff. Years ago, a person's word was good enough, but it's not in this day's time, it's not. Thank you for getting this on paper, so we've got a leg to stand on now.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the agreement between Wayne County Board of Education and Wayne County Wayne for emergency shelters contingent on approval by the county attorney.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that all we need, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt?
Next, we'd have public comments and--
We have a motion to approve the application for wages first.
Oh, that's under consent.
I put it in the wrong place. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's under consent.
Did -- did you want to recognize someone in our audience?
Later.
Okay.
Yes, sir, if that's okay.
I mean, Andrew seems like he needs to be recognized. All right, so we're going to go into public comment?
Yeah, we're waiting for the deputy. I'll announce the restrictions and so forth once we have somebody come in. Do you know how many we have for public comment?
I think maybe just one. I don't know where I'm at.
I got one for sure.
Okay. Are we going to need to go back into closed session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thought we would. We got enough time for another sausage biscuit, no? Got any less, Karen?
Yeah.
They were good. Where did they come from this morning?
Budge Daniels.
Oh, okay. They did come from Budge Daniels, yeah. Before you begin, I want to say that we are in the public comment session. We have a maximum 30-minute time period that we have allotted. I want to remind all individuals that are speaking that you have four minutes, and you must give your name, address, and telephone number. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm here to ask for help. I live across from Moscow Beach, but I also live across from county property. The dust out there is terrible, and a large percentage of it's coming off the county property. I cannot get anybody to help me, and it needs to stop. Can y'all help? I want to ask, does Moscow Beach have that land leased? The FEMA land? Can anybody give me a yes or no?
We are not allowed to give comments during the public time. None of us can answer this.
Okay. I want to make you aware of the fact that in the lease agreement on the FEMA land, you're not allowed to burn. Moscow Beach is burning down there on that land. I want to tell you about a case, a homeless case out there. And I believe your county manager is aware of it, because I called him and talked to him. They were not allowed to park a little -- they had a little camper and a tent, and they were living in it, a man and his wife and three children. They were told that they had to move, or they were going to be locked up. I was able to get them a place to go through the Salvation Army, okay? But yet, Moscow Beach is allowed to park campers on county property. That's wrong. Okay? You're not allowed to treat one person better than the other. Can I put a FEMA -- a camper on FEMA property? Y'all not going to say yes or no? But if I can't put it on the land, a camper, and rent it out on FEMA land that I have got leased, then nobody else should be able to do it either. And according to the lease that I have, you're not supposed to have improper noise or any unpleasant odors coming from it, anything that's annoyed to the residents in the community. You're not allowed to change the surface of the ground, and Moscow Beach has already done that. I can prove it. You're not allowed to do anything on the property that would cause injury or casualty. And I can prove that off of the FEMA land, I have seen the rescue squad go into there and take people out. Now, if that is the case, then y'all need to get your act together. I thank you for your time, and I want something done about the dust.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have anyone else for public comment? Okay. All right, I declare our public comment session closed, and we have a former committee. Ms. Acoff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have four agencies that we recommend. This is recommending these people for our first to vote on it at our next meeting. First of all, we'd like to reappoint to the ABC Board Mr. Eflin Sager and Mr. Dave Meadow Metter to the Wayne County ABC Board, and that's in form of a motion. Don't act on one of these at one time, or--
Just for a reporter.
You just--
Just, okay, all right.
Yeah, we'll vote on the next meeting, sir.
The second one, we need to appoint, make recommendation, Mr. Brent Heath to the Wayne County Transportation Authority, and that's in form of a recommendation from the nominate committee. Next, Mr. David Harold Overman, appointed to the third fire department, fire commission. This is our third tax commissioners that oversees their tax that they receive from the county, and he is replacing Mr. Joe Tucker, who passed away. And next, we would like to recommend, this is a reappointment, Mr. David Jackson to the Wayne Community College Board of Trustees. And like I said, this is a reappointment, and this is for our vote on these at our next meeting. That's the recommendation of the appointment committee. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Acoff. So we will have this list in our packet for next meeting for us to vote on. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is our consent agenda, and you have the four items under our consent agenda that we went over in our pre-agenda meeting, and we would ask for that to be approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Are there any comments or changes from the board members? All in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand, please. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, under new business, is a discussion, a budget work session. Again, after the formal part of this meeting, we'll be having discussion with Davenport, will be discussion, outlines of the proposed budget. And again, we're looking at holding the budget public hearing at our next meeting, which will be June 2nd. But we want to thank Allison, I also want to thank Janice for the work that's been done, and Chip as well, to get us to this point. But we'll kind of delve into it after our regular meeting and during the work session. Then next is motion, number two, is motion to adopt Resolution 2020-19, Resolution Adopting the Neuse River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I will turn that over to our planning director, Mr. Barry Gray.
Good morning.
This hazard mitigation plan is actually an update of our existing plan. We are required by FEMA to update this plan every five years, so we are currently in that cycle. We are required to update the plan, otherwise the county will not be eligible for federal funding for disasters. And so that is important, that we do this and we go through this exercise, of course. There is a resolution that is provided to you. If you want me to read that, I will, otherwise it is available for you to review. We have held several public input sessions on this with our neighboring counties. This is a combined plan with some of our neighboring counties, Green, Jones, Lenore, and Pitt County. So it is a regional plan. This process has taken about 14 months to go through, so this is the end of the road for this update, so to speak. If you do have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer those.
Any question?
We're required to update that plan every five years, correct?
That's right.
What's the preference of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve the Neuse River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you, Ms. Acoff.
He was a little late raising it.
I was looking at something else.
Yeah, I know.
Motion cares. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Next is county managers' comments, and before we get into that, I wanted to turn over to Ken Stern, kind of give us an update on where we're at and things with all with respect to COVID.
Good morning.
Good morning. Luckily, I got my report done early this morning, so these numbers are fresh from this morning. Total cases in Wayne County as of this morning is 867. Of those, we have 248 active cases that we're currently tracking. There are 330 that are in concrete living at this time, and we've had a total of 16 deaths in Wayne County ever COVID-19 related.
Did you say 850 what?
867 total cases.
Eight hundred sixty seven?
Yes. Of those, 469 of those are in news corrections. We have 49 cases related to Genesis, five on Brookdale and Berkeley, two on Brookdale Country Day, which is over two incubation periods past, so that's no longer considered an outbreak. That's a cumulative number from the outbreak that they had. Currently tracking outbreaks at Old Berry Center, where we have 11, and Cherry Hospital, where we have one patient there and four staff that reside in Wayne County at Cherry Hospital. So those are the outbreaks that we're, we're tracking now. We continue to do contact tracing at the Health Department. We've got a lot of people working on that. The staff is working real hard to get up with folks that are positive and determine who their contacts are, their close contacts and following up with them, encouraging them to isolate at home or self-quarantine and, and take whatever precautions they need to take to try to minimize the spread. So I'll entertain any questions, if you have any. I knew it.
Could you run back through the numbers and just basically talk about, what I'm looking for are the number of active cases that are in the community currently, that are not in, what, what'd you call it?
Congregate living?
Congregate living facilities, which would include Cherry, News Correction, any of those.
Right. Right now, we currently have 248 active cases in Wayne County. Those are those that are, are not in congregate living and those that are, are, other than that, the others are already considered recovered. We have 603 estimated recovered in the county. And that includes the News Correction inmates, as well as those that are in congregate living and those in the community that's 603.
So there are 248 active cases that are within the community, not in congregate living?
Correct.
248 that you know of?
Correct. Current positive cases.
Okay. My next question is, I'm reading where there are sites now available where people can go and actually get tested. Do you have to have any symptoms, referrals, or anything in order to go to these sites?
Most of those sites that are, that the DPH lists on the DHHS website about testing sites throughout the state. If it's a private provider site, then the doctor can use their discretion as to whether they want to test you, whether you're asymptomatic or not. And that could depend on whether you're a close contact to a, to a known positive case. The state lab, of course, would only, will only, if you're going with a state lab versus a contract lab, they would only take certain criteria for testing for the state lab. And those are symptomatic folks that have symptoms that are, that are compatible with COVID-19. Those, those are symptomatic folks that are hospital patients, healthcare workers, or first responders, persons who live in or have regular contact with a high-risk setting, persons who are at high risk of illness and for whom a clinician has determined that results would inform clinical management, it will change how they're being treated, uninsured patients that are symptomatic, and postmortem specimens from patients whom COVID-19 was suspected but not confirmed prior to death. And those are the, the six categories where the state lab, who the Health Department works with, we work for the state lab primarily, would take samples for.
I think you basically just asked the question, that is, the impression was kind of given is if anybody that wanted to get a test could go get a test. And they listed the Health Department, but people can't just walk to the, I mean, go to the Health Department and get a test arbitrarily?
No, they cannot. They can, they can call us at the Health Department, let us know what their symptoms are. We can coordinate testing with them, with another provider or, or with the, or with us, depending on the criteria they have and our availability of test kits.
And I agree with Joe here, because the same at the hospital, it's not really changed. Their article was misleading and made, made it sound like you could just walk into the room, hey, I want a test. That's not the way it is.
I think what they're stating is anyone who needs tested can get tested. But they don't really, in the press, they don't really give a operational definition of what needs tested.
There's a limited number of tests still available out there.
Yeah, and that's increasing. They're getting a lot more testing supplies, collection supplies that the Health Departments and providers can order. They've got a, I don't know the quantity, but I know the state is getting a, a lot of test kits from the federal government that they're, that they'll be able to distribute to those that order them to the state lab.
It's the 248 actual cases in Wayne County. How does that compare from two weeks ago? Is, is the number going up?
Well, we've, two weeks ago, it was before the, before DPS reported that all the inmate cases at News Correction had passed their incubation period and are quarantined and have since recovered. So there's quite a spike there. But it's still comfortable. We're still getting new cases daily. Just over the weekend, I think one day we had like 23 cases, another 24 cases. And that's more folks are getting tested, contacts are getting tested. And a lot of those are coming out of some of the meat processing plants where there are identified outbreaks.
Okay. Another question that raises another question. Those outbreaks at the plants, is there not a good chance that they're probably seeing their coworkers outside of the plant and that's how they're getting infected, as opposed to being infected while on the line?
Well, the, the cases that we have that are tied to those outbreaks are not just the employees, but also like their immediate family that subsequently may get it from that employee when they come home. So I don't know that they're getting it from the plant, but with the amount of numbers that they have assembling these plants, it's, you know, you can make that assumption, which is, assumption isn't a good word, but by the rate of infection in some of those plants and their difficulty in meeting, social distancing on the line and things like that.
Because I hope they've taken, I'm sure they've taken steps at all these plants to disperse and plexiglass and all that kind of thing.
The Department of Agriculture, who regulates those plants, have been involved with them as well, making sure that they're, they're meeting CDC guidelines and the guidelines from the Department of Agriculture.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? How many hospitalizations did you say we had?
I did not. I don't have that number on my report. I think the last time the hospital reported, I think it was 19, was it?
I think it was 22.
The total since it started was about 60.
No, but how many are currently?
COVID-19 hospitalizations currently?
Hospitalized, about 19.
About 19.
I thought she told us our meeting 22, so it may have gone up and down a little bit. This was our teleconference last week.
That's still relative to a small number. So out of the active cases of 248, you've got about 2022.
I was trying to find it on my phone.
So about eight, eight percent of the active cases are hospitalized? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
We are listening to the National Media Week. The food, some of the food processing places in Nebraska and out there, we're having problems with their employees testing positive. How well, how are we doing in our region?
As far as, well, right now, we have, affected Wayne County anyway, we've got six food processing plants that are affected by some level of outbreak, whether it be just a few cases to a lot of cases. And I'm not naming those today because I don't know if the state has put those out, actually named those plants yet, so I'm not going to give those today. But, but we are affected in this county. And these, the numbers are signed to the county. There could be a meat processing plant that's in another county, but if they reside in Wayne County, then those are our numbers because they'll, they're coming home from work here and they're, they're quarantining or isolating themselves here in Wayne County.
Once those individuals are identified, they are quarantined, quarantined?
Yes, they're, once they're, once they get a positive result, then our staff, the Health Department, our contact tracers will reach out to them, make sure they're following the doctor's instructions on isolating themselves at home, get contact information on any of their close contacts, either within the home or outside the home, that they're, you know, within close contact to, based on the six foot for more than a few minutes. And then we reach out to those contacts and have them quarantine themselves also for, or for a two-week period of time to make sure they don't develop symptoms and, and so on. We've got, oh, probably at least 10 folks doing contact tracing on a full-time basis. We have nurses, we have lab techs, we have our interpreters that are helping, we have our administrative staff as well that's calling these folks routinely. And they even develop relationships with these people, they call them so much to see, to check on them, make sure they're doing okay and make sure they're doing what they need to do.
Any other questions? Comment? Thank you.
Well, Ms. Kim, please. Go anywhere, yeah. And I appreciate Dave and Aaron being here as well. There are not many people that would come back, you know, on an interim basis in the middle of a pandemic. Ken's?
Wasn't in the middle.
But at the beginning, at the beginning of a pandemic. You know, our health director left us back in January, Ken started in February. The Health Board has done a great job in hiring Dr. Weis.
Weiss.
Weiss. She will start the Tuesday after Memorial Day. Ken will be here, I think, through May 29th. So this is Ken's last Board of Commissioners meeting, at least for now.
Unless he has to?
Maybe he has to come out for public comment. But one of the things we wanted to do is thank you publicly for your leadership. And on behalf of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, let me read this to you. In appreciation to Ken Stern, interim Health Director, Wayne County Department of Public Health, February 2020 through May 2020, for exemplary leadership, dedication, and tireless efforts in returning to Wayne County as interim Health Director during unprecedented pandemic. Ken's calming strength has been the county's anchor during the storm. To come out of retirement into the unknown of COVID-19 and to handle the situation as you did speaks volumes of your character and commitment to Wayne County. Forever thankful and indebted to you and your service to our community. Presented this day, the 19th of May 2020, by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know it's been a challenge for me to come back and, and face this and, but I tell you what, the staff at the Health Department, that's doing all the real work and making me look good, those are the ones that really deserve something like this because they're, they, they've supported me from day one, they welcomed me back, and I still feel welcome. And some of them even say they hate to see me leave. I'll have to come visit when this is all over to come back and get my COVID-19 shot at the Health Department. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The only other thing I did want to mention to you, and I think the biggest issue other than budget that is going to face the county in the next couple of weeks, is our courts are going to be opening June 1st. So just to let you know that we are meeting with the court system tomorrow and trying to come up with a plan. One of the things that we have done is gotten some face masks. So we, we're not sure exactly what we may or may not be required to do. But that's the big issue that we're working on right now, is open up the courts and open it up safely, June 1st. But if you remember, that the states have, have pushed off basically for the last two months, most court, excuse me, most court cases. So it may be a madhouse around here in the short term. So just want to, you know, if you, if you're out this way and you see people lined up, that's what it's for. So, but, but I, I think we're, we're really working on a plan. I appreciate Justin Minshew, our clerk of court, and our local judges. And again, hopefully we'll have a plan that we can share with you after tomorrow. And that is all I have at this time.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, comments? Mr. Pate?
Yes, sir.
Cut me off cord. That's fine, that's fine. Hey, I'd really want to give my personal thanks to Ken, he's done a great job. Oh, there he is, he's still in here. And I, if I'd known this was going to be your, you were going to be here today and it was your last day, I'd have come up with something really tough for you, but it'd be to pick on you. Now, Ken's a great, done a great job for us and we really appreciate that, Dave. Oh, we did have a teleconference last week with the hospital and what he was saying, you're beginning to see some flattening of the curve, which is a good thing. And of course, the hospital's still pretty closed up. We were doing our, our meetings by teleconference, I hadn't even been in the hospital in about two months. But that's, that's a good thing, you've got enough protected equipment, enough ventilators and that kind of thing. Didn't have a chance to go to the coast this weekend and you could tell for sure that the public is ready to get out of their house. Took an hour to get over to Bridge, DeMaral. And the pictures I saw on the beach were packed to the max. We never went anywhere else, but I'm glad things are opening up and I hope that we will continue to go in that direction because people simply just cannot sit at home anymore. I can't and I won't. Thank you.
Mr. Carmody?
Thank you, sir. We had a DSS meeting yesterday, teleconference, very successful. I, I'm not sure we'll ever go back to the old way of deciding you gotta ride four to five, 50 minutes to get to a meeting when it can so easily be done through teleconference because there's always a value of seeing folk face to face. Ken, I'd like to also add my appreciation to the times that I've attended meetings at the Health Department in your previous role. I always thought you gave a quite sophisticated report. And I appreciate that. It's sort of maybe a testament to how well you're doing now as to how well you've always done, I guess. So you, people of history, sometimes just sort of follows them if you do, tend to do a good job one, in one road, you do a good job in another road. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr.
Mr. Doherty? Ken, we'll miss you. You have done a great job there at the Health Department under very extraordinary times. And you've not only led the department during that time, but you also helped us in obtaining a, a new director for Wayne County Health Department. I'm excited about that selection. I think we were fortunate, it happened to be the right timing for her and for the county. She comes to us from Pennsylvania, where she is the Health Director of a county of about 850,000 population. She's looking forward to getting here. In fact, when she made the comment, when we asked her, when could you start? She said two weeks. Well, we were not, we were kind of surprised to hear anyone say two weeks. How in the world can you leave that position and be here in two weeks? But she's that excited about getting out of Pennsylvania, I think. But she does have family ties in North Carolina. I think she has two daughters that are going to ECU. So she's just basically coming back home. But again, thanks so much for, for the great job. And I think I said enough in regards to the pandemic last time. I had some comments that I went a little overboard, but I, I'm passionate about that somewhat. But that said?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Worrell?
I would like to say, thank you, Ken, for all the work that you have done. I've been here brief time and I met you twice, so I do appreciate everything that you have done. Also, I would like to thank all the volunteers and, and all the workers that ensured that our kids were fed during the pandemic. That was much appreciated. And I, I'd still want to say, I'll just still use precaution as we go about our day.
Thank you, Mr. Takeout?
Thank you. I also want to thank Ken for coming back and getting us out of a bind. Thank you so much.
Also, just a couple of things. North Carolina Department of Insurance has a, a grant program. It's a 50/50 grant for all of our volunteer fire departments. And Wayne County has always been real aggressive in getting these 50/50 grants. And basically what a 50/50 grant is, if there's some specialized equipment or whatever for a for turnout gear, breathing equipment, anything that the fire departments need to or have to have to keep their rating up, they have to come up with 50% of the money and the Department of Insurance pays the other 50%. And so it's a good way for the departments to get some much-needed equipment when they only have to pay half price for it. This year, or last week, the announcement came out which departments in Wayne County got the 50-50 grant this year. We had 15 fire departments out of 24 to receive the grants. The other ones, I don't, they may not have been applied, I don't know. But we did have 15 fire departments to receive 50-50 grants. And those grants range from somewhere around $3,000 to $30,000, depending on what the fire departments ask for. And the 15 departments, the total 50-50 grant the Department of Insurance will match was $219,000. So that's speaking highly of our fire departments. Also, I wanted to thank everyone that was involved yesterday for the gray side service for retired Fire Chief Donald Gray from New Hope Fire Department. We kind of shot the social distance in out the window yesterday, but when the chips is down, we all come together. I want to thank our EMS department for their participation and looking after Jason. All of the fire departments, most of the fire departments in Wayne County participated, Seymour Johnson, Goldsboro. And we also had departments in the possession, which I just said, Wayne County, Green County, Duplin County, and I think Lenore County. But mentioned Duplin County just a minute. New Hope Fire Department had purchased a ladder truck several years ago. And I think after they had it a few years, they realized maybe they really didn't need a ladder truck. So they sold that truck to the Warsaw Fire Department in Duplin County. Warsaw brought that truck back home to them for two days. And that speaks highly of our neighbors in other counties. Mr. Gray was the son of a former county commissioner, Mr. Bud Gray. All of us knew of his uncle Bud. Fine family. What that family has contributed to the volunteer service and the EMS fire service, all of them combined, since in that family, their total years comes over 300 years if you add them all together. They were, they're an exceptional family and we got plenty of families like that in Wayne County. But I just want to thank everyone that participated in that yesterday. The county, thank y'all for what y'all did. The older I get, the harder these things are to attend. But thank everyone that was involved. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Aco.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kumari.
Before you do your comments, I would just like to thank Mr. Cuddleback and Mr. Stryker for the leadership that you all provide. I think it's just pure civilians that you're at home, you hear the sirens going and you always wonder where they're going to. You shudder just a little bit and they quieten out and you hope that everybody's okay. I think probably when you get a little older, you become a lot more aware of how quickly things can change in one's life. But as the hurricane season is approaching and all the other things that happen to us on a daily basis, I think Wayne County residents, I do, feel pretty safe in that we can't figure what's going to happen to us, but we always sort of feel like that, you know, maybe somebody is out there to do a little rescue and help us when they can. It's just refreshing to know that we've got a good organization going, Mr. County Manager. And so it's important. Mr. Ken retiring. But like Joe said, I'm sure that lady's coming down here wanting to come to Wayne County to do a good job. Probably to enjoy the weather, it's just a little bit better than these. And I'm sure that's probably what it is, I might be, you know, wanting to get on, get in place. But I've lived and filled that for a couple of times and it's a nice place to live, but the weather can get a little raw up there. So that's a good enough reason for wanting to make it back to North Carolina. But thank, just thank all of the first responders, as Mr. Aco likes to call you. I love you and maybe not in one big basket, but we're fortunate and we appreciate that.
Okay. I just have a few. I want to just say, Ken, thank you so much for your service in the Health Department. It's been a few years since I've been on your board, but I remember the quality, and you're right, of the staff and everybody that's at the Health Department. You have to be commended because good support people start out at the top with a good manager. And you have, you have done that, so thank you. Commissioner Aco, I agree with you. The older we get, the harder it is to lose our friends and our families that we know. I think one thing that has possibly come out of this death of Donald Gray is the fact that the legislature and others, our law enforcement, but our legislators and our lawmakers are keenly aware that in North Carolina, we need to have some special legislation for farm equipment on the road. We have, we have none. Some states have that if you do not yield to a piece of farm equipment, that you are written, you are given a written citation just as if you were speeding or running a stop sign. I understand that this was sort of a freak accident that happened, but yes, it did happen. So maybe somewhere along the way, we can get some stricter laws when it comes to farm equipment on the road. As you know, farm equipment now is 15 times wider than the old one-row farm law that we used to farm with. And when these things go down the road, they take up the whole road. So also, we, we're in a lot of meetings or webinars, the County Manager and I, we still have the Wayne County Business Support Group from Wayne Community College. Craig Faunt is heading that up. We have that every Thursday. And the information that's coming out of that is just, is just invaluable to small business. My, myself, as far as the PPP program and all these things, the small business, it's really been a tremendous help to me, being involved in that. But the Wayne County Development Alliance that I'm now on the board, man, I'm telling you, the Wayne County Development Alliance still has a lot going on. It's amazing that this interest is still there for industry to move in. And of course, that has to do with our WCDAs Director and the staff and everybody that's concerned. I think we have a really good advertising. I think we have what we need, but the key is the word's out there. You can, you can find us across the world as to what's available for industry. Our DSS, as Commissioner Kumari mentioned, we did have our teleconference meeting yesterday. We may be setting a new precedence, Mr. Kumari, but went really well. I can tell you this, the DSS is in better shape now. I'm talking about from top to bottom than I can remember in the six years I've been on the DSS board. We still have some things to do and there always will be. But I'm telling you, the progress, the progress that DSS and meeting, the mandates of the state and all the standards that they put on us, it's just tremendous as to how that has all turned around. So I have to give it, I have to give a lot of the credit, as Mr. Parker does, to our DSS Director. She, she does a fantastic job and is doing a fantastic job. That's all I have at this time. I think we need to go back in a closed session, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to go in a closed session?
So moved.
Okay. I'll raise your right hand, please. Okay. It's closed. Yep. Okay, welcome back from our recess. We're reconvening our budget work session at this time. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Tanaka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Ted Lord here with Davenport and Company. And this is really kind of our annual look. And it's a good opportunity, especially right before we get into a lot of budget discussion, to see where we're at, what our policies are, where we're going, and what commitments we have. Ted and Mitch have done a wonderful job for us over the years and we appreciate Ted being here. And we also appreciate Ted being a big fan of my calls. But with that said, Allison, did you want to?
Just, I'll turn it over to Ted, they've got it all ready to go.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. I've got a presentation, I think we're all looking at the exact same thing on our screens. If you have a hard copy, that's the same as well. There are page numbers in the lower right corner. And I'm going to be.
You can, you can flip forward.
Okay. Okay. So I certainly would like, if there are questions along the way, please stop me and I'll explain what we're, what the topic is or try to address the questions as we go. So we've got a table of contents and hopefully each of you will have a hard copy of this. A number of things in the appendix that we do not plan to go through, they're really support information. But we're going to sort of talk through a little bit about bond ratings, talk about fund balance and financial performance. We're going to give you a good overview of your existing debt profile and your debt obligations. And then we're going to talk about capital projects going forward. We've basically listed those out for you on page two. So again, the topics for discussion that we plan to cover as we go. First, I want to talk about bond ratings. On the left-hand side, you're going to see a chart. And those are the rating agency bond rating categories. So Moody's, Investor Service, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch, those are the three national rating agencies that are most commonly used. AAA is the highest bond rating any local government can achieve. And what you all will see there in gold is that, is that you all are rated AA2 by Moody's and AA by S&amp;P. So you're a couple of notches away from the highest rating possible, again, that being AAA. In the upper left, you'll see that both Moody's and S&amp;P have rated the county fairly recently. 2017 was the last bond issue that they rated. Moody's does publish information every year, so they have a report that was published in the fall of 19. But even though S&amp;P has not published a report since 17, that is still a current rating. So you have a very solid rating in the AA category. And on the right-hand side, we're introducing some peer comparatives. We subscribe to a database that Moody's maintains. And so we're going to look at in a couple of slides, how you compare to counties across the country or nationally that are AAA rated, rated at AA1 or rated AA2, which is what you all are rated. So we've looked at your rating category plus the two categories right above you, where over time, we'd like to see the county's rating evolve. Nationally, there are 257 AA2 counties, one of which is Wayne County. Within North Carolina, you can see the AAA counties, there are nine. There are 13 AA1 counties and there are 21 AA2 counties, again, one of which is Wayne. So you can see who your peers are from a rating, from a rating standpoint and also the credits or the counties that are rated one or two notches above you all. Okay? Any questions there?
Didn't we used to be a AAA county?
I think there may have been the bond issue that you had outstanding that was rated AAA, but it was rated AAA because it had bond insurance on it. So I think you've always been that AA category.
Okay.
Okay? You have not gone backwards in your rating over any of your history that we're aware of. You've only either established it or moved to a higher level. Okay? A little bit of overview on how the rating agencies look at rating local governments. Moody's is on the left. You can see at very high categories, the economy is worth 30% of the rating. And we've put checkboxes next to those as either being things that you can control in the short term or the long term. And so economy, when we're talking about jobs, we're talking about median family income, we're talking about your tax base on a per-person basis. Those aren't things that you can control in a short period of time. They're more of a longer-term evolution. So that's why that's a long-term control check there. Finances are worth 30% of the rating, so we're talking about things like fund balance and your fund balance trends. There's control over that in the shorter term, right? Budget to budget, year by year, that you all can establish financial benchmarks or, you know, either grow fund balance or use fund balance depending on the need. And it's also a long-term factor. Management, we're getting into policies, procedures, planning, things of that nature, is worth 20% of the rating. And debt and pension obligations are worth 20%. S&amp;P on the right gets to about the same place. Economy is 30% of the rating. Finances, whether it's budget flexibility, budget performance, or liquidity, is about 30%. And the remainder of the rating approach is, relates to debt and management. Okay? So talk a little bit about your financial performance, and this is on page seven. The upper-left chart is looking at audited financials fiscal year 14 through 19. The gold line is tracking operating revenues. And then the bars represent operating expenses, whether it's operations, debt service, or capital. Operations in dark green, debt service in brown, and capital and other expenditures in the lighter green. And what you're going to see is over time, particularly in recent years, you know, your revenues are outperforming your operating costs and your debt service. But some years, you're spending on capital more than what revenues are coming in, which is certainly fine. There's no, there's no problem with that. But what it also means when you look at the bottom chart is we've seen some fund balance levels coming down. Not because you're funding operations, but because you're choosing to use some reserves for capital. And again, that's not a negative, it's just trying to establish a baseline discussion on fund balance trends. And when you look at the chart on the right-hand side, what you're going to see is a very impressive, in my opinion, having worked with a number of other local governments, list of pay-as-you-go capital projects that the county has undertaken over the years between fiscal year 15 and 19. About $39 million worth of projects that have been funded through pay-as-you-go sources, whether it's current year revenues or fund balance, effectively avoiding the issuance of debt by funding those with cash. Now, we also know you've had to issue some debt for other projects. And we've listed those in the bottom right, particularly in 2014 for schools, about $38 million. And in 2017 for school and county projects, about $35 million. So, you know, over the last five, six years, we're talking about almost $120 million worth of capital that is invested, 40 million of which was done through, through cash sources, pay-as-you-go, and another roughly 80 million through debt. And so when we talk about fund balance trends, okay. What you'll see on this next page, which is page eight, is in that upper-left chart, your total fund balance in the light green or your unassigned fund balance in the dark green over this period of time have come down. Again, they are still at a level that is above your policy. You all have an established policy that says your fund balance will be at least 14% of your general fund expenditures. And you have been able to do that in all of these years. But we've noticed that that line is coming down closer to the policy level. But we've noticed that that line is coming down closer to the policy level. And that, you know, we've known that because we've known year by year how you're funding capital. And what I think it also means is, as we go forward and start talking about additional capital needs, the use of reserves will be a little bit more limited because you're getting closer and closer to your policy. Okay? So that's just something to be mindful of, because here in a moment, we're going to talk about potential new projects, and how do we fund them. And that's not to say you won't continue doing pay-as-you-go funding. There just not, may not be quite as much reserves available for that purpose above your policy limit. What I will also tell you on the right-hand side is the comparisons. This is where we're pulling in that database from Moody's. And when you look at that upper-right chart, we're looking at your total fund balance, they look at it as a percent of revenues. You're in the gold. Wayne County fiscal '19 is in the gold. You want your bar further to the right here. And the national counties, AAA, AA1, AA2 are in light green, and the North Carolina counties are in the dark green. And you match up very nicely to those medians. You may not be the highest within the entire universe, but you are right on the median for each of those different rating levels, whether it's nationally or within North Carolina. That's for total fund balance. The bottom chart, same basic concept, but we're graphing unassigned fund balance, which is a component of your fund balance. It's the component that has the least amount of restrictions. And you're a little bit below the median for the national counties, but you are pretty well in line with the AAA and AA1 counties in North Carolina. So, a tad below those medians, but I think still at a very reasonable level. So, we know you're in compliance with your policy. You have a good policy. And your fund balance levels at the close of fiscal '19 are at a level commensurate with your rating category and the rating categories above you, whether you're looking at it with just North Carolina counties or nationally. Okay? Any questions? All right. So we'll talk about debt for a moment. Page 10. On the left-hand side, we've tied out to the last audit, June of '19, total debt outstanding of about $73 million. You can see graphically up at the top, on a fiscal year basis, and we've actually gone back to 2014. So the gray bars are the historical debt service by fiscal year '14 through '19. And during that period of time, as we, as I mentioned earlier, you were issuing debt for capital projects, and your annual debt service was going up, right? Investing in schools, investing in county facilities. Year by year, in the gray there, your annual debt service were going up. And it peaked out at, at about $10 million a year. The green bars are showing what the debt service will be going forward. The dark green part is principal, excuse me, is the county debt, and the light green color is school debt. So we've broken that out. Of the $73 million of debt that you all have outstanding today, about $17 million is for county purposes or non-school purposes. In the balance, about $56 million is for school purposes. But debt service is stepping down year by year, some years more than others, and we're pretty nicely below that peak year of $10 million that you had in fiscal year '19. All of your debt is fixed rate. We know exactly what the payments are every year. It's only going to change if you all choose to change it. On the right-hand side, you can see by fiscal year, the principal payments, the interest, total payments. The year we're in, in fiscal '20, total payments were about $8.5 million, and it's stepping down year by year as we go forward. The far-right column says 10-year payout ratio. That is a measurement of how quickly you're amortizing your debt. It's a forward-looking 10-year horizon that says, 10 years from now, how much of that principal will have been retired? And with your debt structure, about 65% of it will be paid back in the next 10 years. Higher is better. You'll see here in a moment, you have a policy about that. And then the bottom, very bottom, we just wanted to make note that fiscal '20 and beyond, there are essentially four loans that are outstanding. A 2011 installment with BB&amp;T, a 2014 installment with SunTrust, and then two bond issues that I mentioned earlier, the 2017, and a 2017 USDA loan. We will continue to monitor those with your staff, looking at what the prepayment terms and conditions are for each of those loans, what the interest rates are for each of those loans, and where there is an opportunity to refund those for savings. You know, we'll certainly, we'll bring those to y'all's attention, so you have an opportunity to assess it and make some decisions. Some of these are currently prepayable, some are not. Those were terms and conditions that were entered into when we closed the loan. And some of them have higher interest rates, but they might have a federal subsidy associated with them. So there might be a higher interest rate, but you're also getting a subsidy for a portion of the interest, so it brings the net cost of the borrowing down, and oftentimes down below current market rates. But we have been looking at these over the years, trying to make sure we're in a position to take advantage of refundings, and we will continue to do that.
Even where one of the evidently limited obligation bonds is at 5%?
Yes, sir. So there are, there are a range of coupons on that loan, from 3% to 5%. Now, at the time, it could get fairly complex with a concept called original issue premium. But at the time, the coupon might have been set at 5%, but you were getting paid more than $100 on the dollar for the bond. So you're, to borrow an even $20 million, you might have only needed to issue about $18 million. That's a function of the bond market. That's not unique to Wayne County. But the long and short of it is, that bond was sold absolutely at, at market rates in '17, and it's not prepayable, meaning we can't take it away from the current bondholders until 2027. So we'll continue to monitor it. There may be an opportunity to do what we call an advance refunding. IRS regulations have changed on that in recent years. But I know that the coupon, particularly the 5% coupon, can be a little bit deceiving. Your cost of borrowing on that, I think, was in the, in the 3% range, even though you had some coupons that were higher than that.
And is it my understanding, or my memory, that the QSCAB, or what did you call it?
QSCAB? That's exactly right. Yes, sir.
That particular loan, which owns school facilities?
Correct.
And the interest is rebated back to us?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Except when, except when they don't have a budget federal, and then you have to pay that you don't get it back.
Let me hear that again.
And they didn't have a budget, the federal budget?
Right.
They didn't give it back.
Well, they have, they have, they have cut the subsidy back a few times through what they call sequestration. But I, I think at the end of the day, that, I don't think they've missed an entire reimbursement of, of interest.
But we are getting most of that back.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you're, you're exactly right. Qualified school construction bonds. Normally, you all would issue bonds on a tax-exempt basis for schools and county purposes. This was a program through the Stimulus Act that actually required you to issue taxable bonds, not tax-exempt, but taxable, so higher interest rate. But you were getting a federal subsidy on the back end. And so, when you net that all out, it's, it's a, it's an effective borrowing tool, even though they have trimmed back the federal subsidy a little bit. They have taken it, they have started to restore it. It's still not at 100%, but it's still a better debt obligation than, you know, what you could do today on a tax-exempt basis, because it's a pretty significant subsidy.
And, and one other interesting thing I'm seeing here, and that is, back on page seven, you listed the projects, county projects, that we completed, that we paid cash for in the amount of about $39 million.
Correct.
And if you compare the county debt for county facilities and so forth, and add our $39 million, it almost balances out to what the entire debt is for schools. Both of those in the $55, $56 million range. We just decided to go ahead and, and spend our cash reserves, rather than borrowing, to do our $56 million worth of improvements.
That's right. And there are, in that page seven, there are a few school projects in there as well that were cash-funded. So it's a little bit of a mix.
Okay, there are some. Okay.
There were some reserves that had been accumulated for school purposes, and I think you all had reallocated some reserves so that...
Midling classrooms, yeah, I see them there. Okay. All right. Good enough.
Okay. But yes, certainly, all of those that were cash-funded could have been debt-funded. They would have been eligible for debt funding. But again, the reserves had been accumulated, the planning had been done, where you all could fund a good chunk of these needs with, with pay-as-you-go versus debt. So, back to page 10. That's your debt profile. We have seen the annual debt service budget go to a high in fiscal '19 of about $10 million. It's now on the downslope. And again, a fairly limited number of bond issues outstanding that we'll, we'll continue to monitor with your staff to make sure that if there are refunding opportunities, we're on top of those. A couple of quick slides, beginning on 11, related to your debt policies and certain key debt ratios. This page 11 is measuring that 10-year payout ratio that I mentioned earlier, the pace with which you're paying down principal. The green bars in the upper left are your payout ratio, 65%, and you see it's getting stronger. Y'all have a policy in place that says, we don't want that to fall below 50%. So you want to be above that yellow, or, excuse me, that red line, and you are by about, you know, 15%. And on a comparison basis, in the upper right, comparing you against those same six categories of nationally-rated counties and North Carolina-rated counties, you want that gold bar further to the right. So you're a bit below the medians, but you're certainly not an outlier. You can see there are highly-rated North Carolina counties that have a 10-year, 10-year payout ratio below 60%, in some cases even below 30 or 40%. Okay? So you're in compliance with your policy, and you are managing that well compared to your, your rated peers. Page 12, another policy you have, which is debt to assessed value. So the amount of debt outstanding as a percent of the tax base. We're using just under about $9 billion, 8.9 billion of assessed value. We're growing that at about 1.25%. And so when we take your debt outstanding and do the math, your, your debt to assessed value is right at about, little hand covered it, sorry, 0.8%. Your policy says we want that to be below 2%, so you're well below that policy. And you would have capacity within that policy. In other words, there is some amount of new debt you could choose to take on and still demonstrate that you are below your policy. That does not mean it's affordable, doesn't mean you should do it. The capacity is there. The question of affordability is what we're going to answer here in a moment. On the comparison in the upper right, you'll see, I'm going to go back to the national counties in light green in a minute. The dark green bars, lower is better. You want your bar further to the left, and you match up nicely to those medians. You are below the medians for all of those dark green North Carolina peers. And you can see there are highly-rated counties in North Carolina whose ratio is above 1% or even 2%. So you compare favorably to your rated peers. The national counties, you get a little bit of difficulty in comparison, because you go to a number of other states, and there are independent school districts that have taxing authority and debt issuance authority. So in those, in those states, counties don't carry school debt. You go to South Carolina as an example, they have independent school districts. So the counties there, their debt profile does not carry the, the school debt. That's why those light green bars are so much further to the left. Within the Moody's rating categories, you, you rank as strong, AA for the level of debt to assessed value that you have. So again, in good shape there. And then finally, debt service versus governmental expenditure. So we're, we're measuring here essentially how much of your annual budget is going to debt service. Remember, I said your debt service was at about $10 million in the peak, and it's starting to step down. When we do the math in accordance with how the rating agencies do it, you're coming up with a debt service to expenditures of about seven, a little over 7.5%. And it's declining over time. You have a policy that says you don't want that to go above 12%, so you're below that policy, which is good. You have some capacity. And on the comparison in the upper right, lower is better here. You compare very well to the national counties, and you're below the North Carolina counties, which in this case is a positive. Lower is better. And for S&amp;P, you rank in their very strong category. So I think the takeaway on all of this debt is you've managed debt, I think, prudently. You've found a good mix between pay-as-you-go and debt. You have good debt policies, you're in compliance with all of those policies, and you have capacity to take on some additional debt if you decide that's something you want to do for capital. That doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable, but the capacity is there within your debt profile to be having those conversations. And so I want to talk about affordability, and County Capital Improvement Plan is the next section. This is the latest iteration of the CIP, or the Improvement Plan. It's going to cover fiscal years '21 through '25. I think it's fair to say that's an evolving discussion, and as things move forward with your budget process, you'll be able to fine-tune that. So I wouldn't, we're happy to talk about the CIP and the details of it, but I have a, a sense that that's going to be something you're going to dig into at some point moving forward. So you'll see a current version here in a moment. 15, and you might need to look at your hard copy. I do. This is an important page, and just bear with me as we go through it, because this is what gets to the affordability of the debt. And if you look from left to right, we have everything on a fiscal year basis, starting with fiscal year '21, which is the budget you're working on. The first column, column B, is the existing debt service for county projects. Okay? The schools do not run through this. The schools' capital is funded in accordance with the school funding agreement. So what we're focusing on here today is the county capital and debt model. So column B is in Boyd, is showing the debt service for the county debt obligations that are outstanding fiscal '21 through '37. Columns C through G are placeholders. Nothing in there, we're going to fill those in here in a moment after we talk about the capital projects. So H, column H is just restating column B. The middle of the page is identifying the sources of funding that are, you all are budgeting to pay that county debt service. So it's essentially mirroring your county debt budgeting practices. And the lion's share of that money is under column I. That is appropriation from current year revenues of about $1,785, and we have held that flat going forward. We've assumed that you could continue to budget that same amount every year going forward, but that obviously will happen year by year with your budget. Columns J, that's a little bit of reimbursement or payment you all are getting on some eastern region loans that you have made to some of the localities. Column M is in Michael, is proceeds from a private donor, private donor campaign related to the Maxwell Center. And then column N is in Nancy, are assessment revenues tied to some street programs that you've done in certain neighborhoods. So you've got, you've got some dollars coming in from a few places, the lion's share of which is the current appropriation from, from the general fund. So column P is in Paul, is where those all get added up. And then what we're doing is we're, we're comparing the, the payments due under H, which we know to the penny. We know exactly what those payments are every year, and the revenues that we've identified in column P. And we compare those in column O is in Oscar. And you'll see that you have more dollars identified for county... And you'll see that you have more dollars identified for county debt service than the payments, right? So you've got a net surplus in this, I guess it's actually column Q, not O, sorry. So you actually have annual surpluses in the county debt model, okay? Remember, schools are not pulled into this. And a couple of takeaways that I believe that means is, one, your current county debt profile is paid for in a sustainable fashion. The key to that is that you can continue to budget the million seven eighty-five every year. And if you were to do that and create those surpluses, you all have some affordability to take on some additional projects, whether it's pay-as-you-go projects or debt-funded projects, okay? And so this is where we're getting to the discussion about the affordability of additional capital needs on the county side. And right now, we're accumulating those revenues way over in the right, under column V. You've actually got about two point nine, call it three million dollars of accumulated reserves over there. Those are reserves, correct me if I'm wrong here, Allison, those are reserves over and above the fund balance numbers that we talked about earlier, right? So you've been using some fund balance, you're still above your policy, but you've been using some fund balance. You in a capital reserve have about three million dollars that you've accumulated and set aside for capital projects that you have, that you're able to consider going forward as needed for your CIP. So you've got some money set aside already, and right now, our model is just pulling over those annual surpluses and accumulating them in column V. What we're about to evolve to is talking about potential projects, and we're going to start to fill in columns C through G over here to see how all of that balances out in the future. Any questions on that?
I do, but I'm going to hold until you get to the next page, because I'm not quite understanding why this model would actually automatically create surpluses. In other words, why would you budget one million seven eighty-five when you could actually budget one two eighty-five and have zero in regards to surplus?
And that, absolutely, and I think that's something you all will look at year by year, budget by budget, with whatever stresses you're having in other parts of your budget. If that is an area where you want to trim it back, you're able to do that. That was the dollar amount that you budgeted in FY twenty. So we've held it flat.
Sure.
And I think it's just a working assumption right now that you may choose to do something differently as you get into...
But this working model would actually produce additional surpluses to where in 2041, there's going to be twenty-two million in surplus capital.
If you do nothing else on capital, which we're about...
Agreed.
About to fill in some of those, and I think that's what you were alluding to earlier.
Okay, yeah, let's go to...
So we're kind of building it bit by bit, but I absolutely hear you loud and clear.
You might be taking it, I'm going to say I've magnified it a little bit, Ted, so you have to scroll more.
Okay, okay. So draft CIP summary, fiscal years twenty, am I moving what's on your screen when I do?
Yep, yep.
We've got fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-five. The top eight lines are the general categories of uses of funds. So you have general fund departments, school funding agreement, vehicles and IT. And we have some detail that we'll look at in a moment, and certainly in the back of the book, that will allow you to understand what's in each of those four broad categories. But in total, fiscal twenty-one through twenty-five, it's about in that, over in the right, thirty-seven point eight million dollars worth of projects have been identified preliminarily in this CIP version, okay? The bottom of the page is showing where the sources of funds could come from, whether it's departmental funding, state funding for DSS, dollars that have been agreed to and identified in the school funding agreement, debt issuance, and pay-as-you-go or fund balance. So what you'll notice is year by year, lines eight and seventeen should match. The uses of funds and the sources of funds should match every year, and they match in the aggregate thirty-seven point eight million. Keep in mind, solid waste is not in here, there's a couple of other footnotes there at the bottom. And I think if we go, maybe I'll let you drive it.
Sure.
Allison, if we go to the next page, you're going to start to get into some additional detail about each of those four broad categories. So I'm on page seventeen, you can see we've got the county general fund departments, which go all the way down to line twenty-three. That's the thirty-one point six million, okay? That's the lion's share of what makes this up. And then we have details surrounding, that includes the schools. Then we have details surrounding sheriff, EMS, general government, vehicles there. You can see that subtotal on line twenty-nine, and then the IT subtotal on line thirty-four. So I don't know if there's any questions on that. Again, I think these are projects and categories that y'all will continue to discuss and evolve on, but this is what we're starting with when we talk about the capital program going forward.
And an assumption we made in this year's CIP moving forward was we were funding it at the same level as we did last year. So in just making adjustments, we've been there.
Just a quick question, the two point six million on emergency management, that does not include the new nine-one-one call center?
Correct.
So what is that included?
That is the, that's the towers.
Yeah, that's...
That's the towers and radios.
That you're going to finance.
That we're going to finance. So they've just brought those forward because we're financing them. You'll see that, I think, in some other schedules that he's got.
Yeah, those were projects we approved last year, but we just did not do the debt financing yet.
Okay. And I think over the years, as this process has evolved, I think it's fair to say, it was oftentimes, if something wasn't approved for funding in year one, it's usually moved out a year to year two. And so sometimes you see that as a holdover, that you've got a year that's kind of heavy or larger, and it's just because generally, if something's not ready to be funded in year one, it goes to year two. And I think things will evolve on that, ideally to where you're putting projects in years where either they're absolutely needed or they fit some other prioritization process to land in that year.
So when we get into our budget discussions, we're going to go through some of this.
Right. And what you'll see is we've got listed, I've got listed all capital, but not the radios, but all capital, the one point seven million. I'm still recommending that we keep capital in this year because when we start delaying and putting things off, we're only getting in trouble and getting further behind.
But we're going to talk about these individuals...
Yes.
Later, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, good enough.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to page eighteen. What we've got here is a little more detail on the sources of funding. So what we're calling the other sources is subtitled on line eight. A good chunk of that is the school funding agreement, two million dollars a year. We do have some debt built into this CIP on lines ten through fourteen. We've done short-term debt for five years or seven years, and some longer-term debt on fifteen years. We basically looked at the projects that are on the list now and kind of discussing with staff on the expected useful life of the asset, an appropriate term over which to finance it. So we've got some projects that are being debt-funded over five, seven, or fifteen years. In total, line fourteen, it's about eighteen million dollars. Now, it's not all done at one time, it's spaced out over time as the projects are scheduled. And again, I think the expectation would be that this would get revisited year by year as you're working through your budget process and prioritizing projects and determining, you know, your appetite and ability to take on additional projects, whether it's cash-funded or debt-funded. And then finally, at the bottom, we've got pay-go funding, whether it's reoccurring, built into the budget, it's a level of about a million two a year, or whether it's the potential use of one-time reserves. Okay? So if you take that at face value, knowing that you're going to be revisiting that CIP and digging into it, what we've got on page nineteen is just showing the debt portion of the CIP as I just discussed it. So we are talking about five, seven, fifteen-year debt amortizations. If you look in the bottom right, you'll see it says par amount by fiscal year, that's the borrowing amount, approximately eleven million in fiscal twenty-one, the year you're about to go into, a million in twenty-three, and six million in 2025. In total, a little over eighteen million. And you would fund that year by year. So you're not signing off on all of this at one time. It's just for projection purposes, this is what we're doing, and we're taking that amount of debt, remember, it's just, call it county debt, no school projects are flowing through this, just county projects, and we're layering that eighteen million dollars of debt onto your debt profile in that chart in the upper left. Remember, your payments were a little over eight million, and they were stepping down. Well, when we start layering in this eighteen million, we're going to see that debt profile steps up a little bit, which is going to get to that affordability discussion here in just a moment. Go to page twenty. We have revisited the debt policies. So if you were to do that capital program and include the debt that we've identified, how would it impact your policies? And so you look across the top in the upper left, you continue to be above that, yep, orange line on the ten-year payout. Above is good in that case. So you have not, you have no problem with that policy, nor do you have a problem with debt to assessed value in the middle, you're below your policy of two percent, and debt service to expenditures, you're below your policy of twelve percent. So you can sort of set to the side, I think, can we do this within the confines of our policies or our rating category, our capacity? I think the answer is yes. And that doesn't mean you should do it, but that part of it, I think, we're very comfortable saying that is an order of magnitude of projects and debt that should work fine with your policies and your bond rating. Affordability is what we've addressed on page twenty-one. So we have gone back and revisited that whole chart, okay? And so we have filled in a number of those columns. Remember, all we had on the far left was column B is in Boyd. That was the existing county debt service. Well, in C, we added in the debt service, the potential new debt service if you were to issue that eighteen million over that five-year period. Column C is what that debt service would be under our assumptions, and that's a blend. Some of it was five-year debt, some was seven, some was fifteen. We have some one-time, under column D, one-time pay-go capital that was identified in the CIP. Column E is annual CIP pay-go of seven fifty. F is vehicle pay-go of nine seventy-five, and G is IT maintenance pay-go of two fifty. So we've populated a bunch of these columns, and therefore, column H now is a more comprehensive number, right? You can see that that is stepping up from twenty-one to twenty-two, from about three point six million to five point one million, and then it gets a little bit higher out in a few years. So column H becomes, under this approach to the CIP, just taking it at face value. Those are the payments that would be needed to support that CIP, whether it's pay-go or debt. We have kept column I the same, the budget, million seven eighty-five from general fund appropriation. J is the same. K, we've included for receipts from volunteer fire department, that's associated with some of the projects that we've funded in the CIP. L is monies that you all have available to pay for the county CIP pay-go, million two two five. And that's, the rest of those columns are the same. So what we've now done is we've added a couple of those revenue sources that show up in column P is in Paul. So now what we're doing is measuring H against P. H are the payments that would be needed, P are the sources of funding that we've identified, and we compare those in column Q. And we go from what had been annual surpluses of around five hundred thousand dollars a year to some deficits, right? The current funding that had been identified, it's not that it's insignificant, it's obviously significant, but there's additional resources that would be needed to fund the CIP in this manner. And what you're going to see as we go through the far right-hand side of this page is, under column V is in Victor, we have spent down those accumulated reserves over about three years, and it's out in fiscal year twenty-three and beyond, where we have measured under column U, the equivalent penny impact to support the debt or the CIP. So essentially, what we're saying is in fiscal year twenty-three, you would need about a penny, just under a penny's worth of revenue to supplement your debt budget to fund this CIP. And the next year, you'd need another one point, the equivalent of another one point two pennies, a couple of years later, a fraction of a penny. So over about a four-year period, keeping in mind that it doesn't start until 2023, you need just under two and a half pennies worth of revenue to support this CIP. Or you could look to, you know, establish the funding for that earlier, which would mean you could minimize it a little bit. A penny on y'all's tax rate is generating about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's on the lower left. So that gives you just a sense of the affordability of this CIP, right? We've discussed the capacity. The capacity is there within your policies and your rating category or debt profile. The affordability is something in the range of about two, two and a half pennies over the next several years that you would need to identify from other sources or find within your budget to support this capital program. And I just want to note, that doesn't include any operating costs, this is just capital, right? And it doesn't include any school capital, because we've addressed that in a separate model consistent with the school funding agreement. We stop there if there are any questions.
I do see that in this year, you've got one-time pay-as-you-go, five hundred and twelve thousand on that top line. So we're going to actually budget in there, one-time pay-as-you-go, five hundred and twelve. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is the...
In addition to taking out of capital reserves, two forty-nine.
If all of this got funded exactly in that manner, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So that's the county picture. We wanted to address the model that we've developed with staff on the school funding agreement. It's set up in a similar fashion on page twenty-three, but has, you know, a whole entire different set of revenues and expenses running through it. So just let me get you oriented to this, again, starting on the left by fiscal year, and this one starts in fiscal year twenty, the year we're finishing. Column B is in Boyd is school-related debt service that's already on the books. We know that to the penny. We have no new debt running through this model, nothing new, just existing. And part of the school funding agreement is in their column D of two million dollars a year for pay-as-you-go. So there is existing school debt service under B, pay-go under D, and they are summed up together under column F. The funding for this is coming from G through K. Restricted sales tax, that is growing, zero percent growth in the first year, and then three percent per year beyond that. This was a preliminary discussion with staff, sort of in light of what's going on in the economy. That will be revisited, I think, and it's going to be what it is. Lottery reserves, excuse me, lottery distributions under column H. Again, you can see that those have been trimmed back a little bit and then go with no growth fiscal years twenty-one and beyond. fiscal years '21 and beyond. Edgewood Community School Savings under column I, those don't begin until fiscal year '22 at about $527,000. And then the QSCAB subsidy on that debt that we mentioned earlier under column J. So what you'll see is G, H, I, and J represent the sources of funding that would be enumerated, detailed in the school funding agreement. K is actually a, we're solving for K. There's a little bit of a shortfall, tune of about $43,000 out in fiscal year '21, or the year you're getting ready to deal with budget. What you'll notice under column M, though, is we got a couple of years of deficits, but we also have some reserves accumulated way over in column R. So under the school funding agreement, as we understand it today, we've got some reserves. We will likely need to use those reserves in the current year as well as fiscal year '21. Maybe a little bit of a shortfall in '21 of about $43,000. But then at that point, this is a self-sustaining model for the existing debt and pay-go. Nothing new is running through here yet. Okay? Anything you'd add?
I just wanted to add, in column R, where you were talking about the school sales tax reserves, that, this reserve is separate from that original 4.6 million that we've been using to pay for Southern Wayne and set aside for that project. So that is not included in here, because we considered that to be kind of set aside for something else.
You were reading my mind. And out of that 4.6, we've already allocated some of that for the gymnasium, right?
That's right. I think there's about a million and a half left, if I'm remembering correctly.
Those 365 also for land purchase.
Well, a couple of questions here. First question is, why have you not designated any dollars for the Edgewood Community School Savings for two years, '20 and '21?
So that was at my direction last year, whenever we, I think we decided to give them that two-year bridge originally, to get them through whatever decisions they were going to make about Edgewood. And so that was the, that was the last I communicated with them, until something more permanent was decided.
And secondly, we're not going to have that 527, or are we?
No. Well-
You would, after-
We've now committed a half million dollars of that this year that we're looking at. Then after that-
You would have it.
-is up to the board. But, you know, since really the-
No, we're ending it. We're ending this thing.
We're ending it. Well, yes.
In fact, we're not going to even refer to Edgewood again in any of these documents.
So we will, we will label this something else. But if we do what we, what was discussed, what we've talked about, which is maybe doing a one-time capital instead of this, and then from here on out, we would have this savings, it would still be built into this debt repayment plan, and we can call it something else.
Just call it something else.
We will.
Okay.
In light of that, does page 24 relevant still?
You can show it to them. I did, I asked Ted to-
Well, can I go back to 23?
Okay.
We'll make sure we all are on the same page here. Basically, all of the financing for school debt that's outstanding is paid for from the following things. From restricted sales tax that goes to schools, one. Two, from lottery proceeds. Three, from school savings, the 527. And number four was the subsidy. Correct. And out of all of that, there were no county dollars to support that debt, except until you get to 2021, that would be a contribution of $43,000. Am I correct on what I just said?
Yes. Now, again, we've just got to recognize that.
And I'll hush. Thank you.
Okay. So we did run a sensitivity case on 24.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sensitivity.
But again, I guess we get back, the only thing that changed on 24 is we dropped out the dollars in column I. Those went away.
Whoa.
And in return, or as an effect, column K, we bumped, had to be increased. All other things are the same. So we zeroed out that 500 and some thousand a year in column I, and as a result, there's a few more dollars identified as being needed over the next few years in column K.
Do, Craig, do you see a need for this page? No.
Not anymore.
No, okay.
So back to 23 to be revised accordingly, as we've discussed. That would, I guess, be our base case, current funding plan that reflects the school funding agreement.
Agreed.
That's what we had wanted to go through, slide by slide. As I said, there's a number of things in the appendix that you might want to look at, gets into more detail of the CIP, rating reports, your individual debt op schedules. But this was, I think, what we wanted to cover verbally.
Well, your hour's up, anyway.
Right on time. But we'll continue to get direction from staff as you all work through your process and be able to update this accordingly. But again, I know you've got challenges going ahead of you, but the way you've managed this historically, I think, has set you up to have some flexibility to fund capital as you all determine the priorities to be. It's not an endless ability to fund, but there's, there's capacity and affordability there as you go through this.
I have a supposing question, suppose, hypothetical. This board was led to believe that we, if we availed ourselves of the lottery, the special lottery fund for tier-one, tier-two counties, that we would have to give up our lottery dollars, and we had already used it to finance the debt. So we just took it off the table. Further questioning, where it was discovered that we would only have to give up our allocation for five years.
Correct.
And I don't know why we were not told that before, but at any rate, so actually, we would give up 1.275-
For five.
For five years.
If awarded the needs-based grant funding.
Correct.
Right.
So we now have entered into an agreement with the school board to apply for that to the tune of $15 million. And I suppose the question is, we're trying to determine if that is a reasonable thing for us to pursue, because we have to, first of all, match a dollar for every $3. So if it's $15 million, we'd have to put in $5 million.
And be able to spend 20, correct?
To be able to spend 20. So actually, if it's a $15 million grant, well, actually, we would have to bring that down to about $18 million, and we would have to put in like four, a little over $4 million to have the three-to-one match. But we would also have to give up the 1.2, so that's $6 billion. So we'd have to, we would actually have $10 million, we would have in it over a five-year period.
Okay.
Am I, are you following me here?
Let me just recap. If you get the full award of the grant for your tier, you would get $15 million.
Okay, yeah, let's go a little-
Right. And in order to take advantage of that full $15 million, you would need to bring $5 million to the table.
So a total of 20.
So you have a total of 20 million that you're spending, 15 of which is a grant.
Correct.
Okay? And in return, you'll be foregoing a million to, call it a million-three for five years.
Correct.
Right? So five, six-
6.5 million.
6.5 million of lost lottery funds.
Correct.
So-
Plus the $5 million we have to put into it. So we'll have 11 and a half million in.
Correct.
Or 20 million.
Yes.
Sounds right.
So basically, we're going to get a half, nine and a half million dollars.
Now, correct. And the way this school funding is set up, I think you alluded to it earlier, is you're going to just need to figure out how to handle that school funding, the model on page 23, for those years where it's lost.
We would have to supplant, we would have to find the funding for the 1.2.
Right. Right. And those, you know, those grants, we've worked with a number of counties that have received it, they're usually, applications are in the fall.
Yep.
And if you're awarded, you start to lose the lottery money immediately, or that year, even if you're not ready to move forward.
Oh, really?
Wow. So the clock starts ticking. Now, you have time to use the grant money. It's, I'm not aware of a deadline that they've imposed. If you're awarded in October, you must start in January. I don't think that exists, but what I do know is the lottery money is discontinued maybe the first quarter following the announcement of the grant.
Pardon me. Did you say you have worked with some schools already, or you?
We have worked with a number of counties that have used this program. So you begin to lose the lottery money pretty much upon the announcement of the grant. You have time to spend the grant money. If I'm not mistaken, it's only for new construction. But otherwise, it's, where we've been involved with it, it seems to have worked, you know, pretty well.
Well, everybody has an opinion on this, and I suppose I'm asking for yours. Is that not a reasonable deal for the county to take advantage of, that we would actually, even though we've got a forego, we're going to have to find the replacement for the 1.25 on lottery funds for five years, we still would pick up nine and a half million dollars through the grant?
Right. You look at it over a five-year horizon. You're coming out ahead, but there are some years where you've got to rework your cash flows.
Well, let me ask this question. Back to the schools that you are working with. New construction only. Those schools and school systems, were they absolutely shovel-ready?
No.
Decisions that bid me?
They were not. They, that's what I've seen, is that applications were made and approved with sort of very preliminary descriptions of what the project was going to be, but they were not fully designed or bid. In fact, there are counties that are still sitting on the grant money. They don't, they haven't taken possession of it, but it's in their name, but they have not yet moved forward with the project. And I'm not aware of a sunset on the grant at this point, but that may be something that's being discussed.
But they're losing their lottery money.
Correct.
And that began in the year it was awarded?
Correct.
And my also understanding is that we actually have to put the match up first before we receive that, those lottery dollars. They're not going to give us their lottery dollars until we actually-
I think what they will do is a pro rata draw. So when you start construction or you're incurring costs for whatever that project is, it's a three-to-one match until you-
I suppose the meat of it is, is do you recommend we pursue this?
I'd like to see what the cash flow implications are of doing this and what we all just jotted down. I'd like to confirm it, but I, I don't think there's any harm in pursuing the award. Now, you can, I believe you can turn it down.
We can, well, I hope so.
And I think that would be an important, you know, what is the project that this would support? And one of the things I've found that's been a little bit of a challenge is, you know, you, do you have a project that you legitimately want to spend $20 million on? Because that's what you'll be doing, to fully take advantage of the grant, you got to have something-
Well, we do. We've got a 112-year-old school. I think that needs to be replaced.
As we found in other places, there was a little bit of a disconnect between the project budget and 20 million. And you, you know, if you don't take the full $15 million, you know, you gotta, they don't just give you the 15 and the match is less. I mean, you get the gist. So I don't think there's any downside to continuing to move forward with that. I'd like to sit down with Allison and folks and just sketch this out in this debt funding agreement, or the school funding agreement, but based on your tier, that's, you know, that's a significant amount of grant money.
We need to get some guidance on that, because we now have put it forth for them to apply for it. We've got the need for the school. We've acquired now the property for the school. So we would need you and Allison to get together and work on how best we could arrive at the dollars necessary that we're going to lose from the lottery funds to do that. So I think we need to examine.
And we use it on more than one project?
I-
It might be two applications. I'm not certain I can, I can ask that question.
Maybe we can't use it for land purchase. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I know it's new for new construction, but I'm getting it used for two, you know, basically, you know, two locations.
Yeah. I'll ask that question. It may just be that there's two applications. And I would think you're limited to 15 and around, or maybe 15 in total, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it's 15 total.
All right. If we go for it, well, this is for what, five years? Five years?
Five years, you give up the lottery dollars.
If they were-
What's going to happen if our powers-to-be in Raleigh changes the rules?
Well, that's a chance to take, that's possible.
That wasn't exactly my concern. My concern was, and this is my question I wanted to ask you before I even said what my concern is. You've given this exact, you're working with the school system with their finances, advising them as to what they should do or shouldn't do.
No, we're working with the counties in those places, just like you all.
Just like us.
Correct. Right. Not, not advising.
You're not parallel working with the school system and saying you ought to do this?
No, he's our guy. Yes, that's right.
I had just sort of-
Yeah, if I, I didn't mean to speak that way. If I did, it-
Well, no, no, no. It was just that-
County.
Yeah. I just could not remember, pardon me with this, I worked with the school system back there, and I could not remember whether I has ever had seen you making such a presentation, not exactly like this, but a brother presentation to them about how to best spend your money. And Mr. Acock, my concern was that not that Raleigh would change their mind, but inside our county going to change their mind about what they needed to have done, Joe. And then we don't have the right agreements to keep moving forward, and then we start to lose the money because we didn't need, didn't use it. That's my concern, is that we would get out there-
Well, it had to be earmarked specifically to a project, because they're not going to fund it unless it's to a specific project.
That may be true, but they can change the rules. I mean, they earmark so much for the lottery funds for the schools, and then in the middle of the show, they change the rules.
And one last question on this, before I let you go. The dollars that we have in, leftover in the school-designated capital improvement tax dollars, a lot of adjectives there, which is now 1.5, 1.8 million dollars.
Right.
Can those funds be used for the match?
You can use, you cannot use accumulated lottery money.
Nope, no.
Then I think you're fine. We've done some digging on that. You can, you can debt fund the match, or you can cash fund it as long as the cash is not from accumulated lottery. Sales tax- or you can cash fund it as long as the cash is not from accumulated lottery. Sales tax, other reserves.
Well, it's designated for capital improvements, and if we've got to come up with four million and they got 1.5, then we gotta put 3.5 in.
As long as it's not lottery money.
Okay, as long as it's not lottery money, okay. All right, thank you.
And, and if, if they made an application this year, my experience has been you all have to approve it, the school board has to approve it, and awards are made either September 1 or October 1. If you're awarded, that will be in the early part of FY '21, right? And the lottery money would start to discontinue October, November. So this would be an FY '21 impact to the budget on the, the lottery.
And, and my very reason to bring that up, to see whether or not we can make sure we have provisions in the event that we go this route, that we're prepared.
Right. Well, and we have a, an agreement with the school board, and, and we passed a resolution in support of applying for it, so they're supposed to be working on the project now. So we've already identified the project. So I think the takeaway that we've gotten is to work on that specifically.
Right.
Sketch out those dollars and those cash flows, and then, next go-round, rework this $527,000 amount in the naming and the description.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your hospitality, I appreciate it.
Do we need, I, I've got, what I have on the budget is, is fairly quick, if, if you want to go ahead and do that now, or do you need a break?
Are y'all okay? You want a break? Okay, keep on, keep on going.
All right, what we have done, and again, we've got copies of our budget here that we'll hand out and give to you, and the plan is not to go through every line item today. So what we did was to look at some of the really major things that we could or could not cut. We knew that with COVID and, and the loss of sales tax and the lost revenue, we had to make some major cuts, and, and part of the major cuts was, we could go through this and pick out a hundred dollars from supplies here, a hundred dollars there. We could, you know, come up with $50,000. We wanted to look at really some large cuts and make recommendations too. So, yeah, the cut sheet. We, we call this the cut sheet. So data's gonna be given you.
The cut sheet?
The cut sheet.
The what? You don't have the cut sheet on my screen?
Oh, it's classified information.
Evidently.
At the top of the list is our, really our large CIP items. And then we also have our solid waste CIP as well. Again, our solid waste is a enterprise fund.
What are you looking at?
Uh, the top of the sheet.
The, the. The top of my sheet says EMS net vehicle allocation.
Right, that, that's a, a, a part of, that's the CIP. All right, then the EMS net vehicle, again, if we do cut Wayne net, we can cut one of those vehicles out, so that is 185,000, 87,000. So that we will already cut. We have kept the information, technology in at 250,000, the sheriff's vehicles at 425,000, and other county vehicle allocation at 175. Basically, on vehicles is what we've done this year. The recommendation is we continue with the CIP. I, I don't want us to get too far behind that we're playing catch-up.
How long have we had this plan in place on vehicle replacement?
This is year two.
This is year two?
This is year two. The 4H van, that would come from Kevin's funds. It's not part of the CIP. They're funds that he already has available through the 4H program. Again, there's other capital that is included in here, a lot of it dealing with the sheriff's department, sewer system replacement, 125,000, or repairs, not replacement, canine washer and dryer generator. These are still capital items that we need moving forward.
Also throwback?
That is a, I'll have to get the sheriff to explain that to you.
One of those things they throw out, and then it makes the.
And they run over the tires or something?
Can't remember. I can't remember.
$15,000?
They did the same thing again. Not only that, but a board will work with nails in. $15,000?
Yeah.
I mean, really? Oh, she's gonna go find out, yeah. Also, the washer and dryer. Now, we just approved a dagum washer and dryer.
This is for the Maxwell Center?
I'm not sure if this is.
There was a dishwasher for the detention center. Do you think that maybe was the washer and dryer for the Maxwell Center, I don't believe was ever put in?
Oh, I didn't know this was for the Maxwell. I thought this was for the sheriff. The washer and dryer is for the Maxwell Center.
Let me see.
Let's find out who is.
Yeah, we're, we're still some of that. We, we don't still have a place to put the washer and dryer for the Maxwell Center.
$40,000 for a washer and dryer?
Don't y'all let my wife see that figure?
$40,000. What kind of washer and dryer are they doing? Does it have a robot that comes with it?
It's got a throwbox.
That's a throwbox.
That's what it is.
But, but what we can do with capital is we can get the, the sheriff, you know, again, the HVAC unit, the sewer, that was half of it.
And why have you got Viper update in here twice? Viper update, 12, 575 Viper update.
One is for EMS, and one, one was for Wayne net.
Well, we don't need the Wayne net.
Well, we sure don't.
Why would we need Viper update? That's Highway Patrol.
I, I think there was something about inoperability.
Well, you know, but it is Highway Patrol. I mean, we've got to have some radios that can go to it, but I mean, why would Wayne net? I mean, I know we take it, I know we take it out, but why was it even in there?
My, my understanding was for, uh, in, or to be able to talk to Highway Patrol as well, there was something about inoperability between agencies, so.
Yeah, and, and I might be talking about something I don't know anything about. I may, might be needing. I'm not saying it's not needed now. I just, I'm just questioning it, why?
We, we could, you know, again, this is not the, we could get the.
Well, you just open up Pandora. What is a lead monitor? $68,000, $63,000. What is that? Lead monitor?
Lead monitor.
Lead monitors, okay, lead monitor. What is that?
Are you, are you jumping down the.
Oh, that was EMS, wasn't that EMS?
It's EMS.
Yeah. Well, listen, now listen, just because EMS or the sheriff's department says we would want something, doesn't mean we need to provide it.
Well, and, but. Yeah, I, I think.
There's expiration day. Well, anytime you buy any software or whatever, they expire in three years.
I, I think the.
It says that, if you want to read what.
Yeah, th- those are the cardiac monitor.
Uh, these monitors will pace, obtain 12 leads to fibrillate. I don't know what that word is, and will monitor heart rhythm. This is a state requirement for any paramedic unit.
Oh, well, of course, it's got to be a state.
Took care of that one.
But, but we could have the department heads, we'll, we'll have the department heads come in and explain.
They've already classified it whenever it says it. It was a statement requirement.
And if I have a heart attack, I want them to have it.
The Viper update says.
I said, I'll take that stuff by phone people.
The Vipers will be going to phase two in 2025. If radios and ambulances are not phase two compliant, staff cannot communicate with hospitals in North Carolina. We are requested to replace two radios annually.
Okay, so the hospital's involved in Viper now. That's, that was the key right there.
So each radio is $6,000. And over the next, what, four years, we're replacing them, all of them?
Mm-hmm, well, one, two, it looks like six years.
Over six years? So it's just not $12,000, it's.
Eighty-one.
A hundred thousand dollars. And because the hospital has changed.
Well, let's clarify that now, because we don't know, because we don't know. Let's don't go filling somebody under the bus, because we don't know. We just need to clarify.
Oh, I'm good without throwing people under the bus.
I'm trying to save you on this one.
But, but we can't.
Let's get some more information.
We'll have the sheriff, and this is just the overall, this is the overall picture. You don't have to make a decision today on whether in or out. This is just the overall picture was in the CIP.
Oh, so we don't have to approve this?
You don't have, not today. You don't have to approve today.
When, when do we have to approve it?
When, when it comes. We will get you the information that you don't, we'll have the sheriff and also EMS come in as well if you have any questions about something very specific. But this was what was requested and recommended in the CIP. The thought process was, we are making a lot of cuts this year, but this is really the second year of funding the CIP at a consistent rate. We didn't want to get behind.
I understand. One last question on it. What in the world is a pictometry?
Pictometry. That's for revaluation, yeah, they're, when they're doing the, I think it's aerial photographs or evaluation.
We didn't buy a plane now, did we?
No, sir.
They're paying for it, so the taxes are generated. They do it every several years.
When they talk about the washer and dryer, that they think that was for the Maxwell.
We were trying to figure out.
It's for the jail.
So we pay somebody to take aerial photos. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right. And then, then we have the solid waste capital, and again, that's enterprise fund, and they're in good shape as far as their fund balance. One of the things we're recommending, cutting, you see the positions from election specialists, planning, soil conservation tech.
Michelle, before you get to that, the washer and dryer is for the jail, not the Maxwell. It's for the jail.
And we didn't just buy a, a washer and dryer?
They've had it in the budget for several years, knowing, because they've been breaking down, but they've managed to keep it working, so.
Is that the old jail?
This one over here, I assume.
That's my plan, the jail, the old jail.
Yes, yes.
Right, because I think there is washer and dryer at the Cary windows already.
Yeah, I didn't know if that fits out of warranty. I figured it's all pieces done out.
But also, we looked at cutting some positions. You'll see the list of positions we're recommending cutting. These were open at the time. Right now, these positions are frozen, but in talking with staff, we will just cut these positions from Wayne County. And then you'll see the Wayne net vacancies. That's how many vacancies we have right now in Wayne net. And again, those positions have been frozen. So we're cutting positions. We, we did not look at cutting DSS, health, or jail, or sheriff's department, as a lot of that was just mandated positions and also first responders, and we had a tough time filling those positions to begin with. We had a lot of requests for some new positions.
Are there, are there no other positions that, that we can look at as far as cutting?
There's no other vacant position.
Right. Well, I didn't say whether they're vacant or not.
Well, we've also cutting, you know, Wayne net, that's another four.
Yeah, well, we're eliminating that whole department. Let me just pull it as deadly as I can. Generally, organizations grow by positions. And sometimes they get kind of bloated, let me put it that way. And I'm just wondering if we've asked a analyzation of each department as to how critical every position is, whether it's in, to give you an example. Evidently, this tax assistant one has been in the tax office for some years, and that position has been there, but all of a sudden, it's vacant now, so we just are going to cut it because it's vacant.
Because it's vacant and.
But, but they probably didn't need them to start off with, because if you're cutting them, they must not be critical to the operation of the department.
Well, they, I would, they, if you talk to the department heads, every position.
Oh, well, absolutely.
However, we took a point in time and said, these positions were open at this day. We're freezing them as of now, and, and this is what we're doing, you know.
At some point, there has to be a time of looking to verify that every position is critically that important. I don't care whether or not, whatever organization you're in, you have to do that occasionally. Now, I know, people say I got no heart, and, and everybody, that we need to look after every employee, but that's true, but if the position is not needed, then we need to find another position for that particular person and eliminate it.
Right.
So I would just ask that we do that.
We, we, and we can go back and work, but, but these were the ones we, we, we off the top.
I'm gonna give you a whole year to work on it.
Okay.
Come next year, this time, I would like to have, and it analyzed to see whether or not these positions are in fact act critical to the mission of that particular department.
Yes, sir.
Now, this is delicately as Joe Dodery gets.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
We could cut this board back to five.
One of the weeks ago.
That's a pretty good.
That is a good one.
If, if you look, if you look at, well, we've had some requests for some new positions. At this point, we're only recommending two new positions. One is the EMS or the 4H after-school coordinator. That's funded by the fees within that department. They have had high attendance, and so the fees have generated that salary, so we've recommended that. We're also recommending the QA manager for 911. If we do emergency medical dispatch, we have to have that quality assurance position on staff to make sure that we are having the right protocols and that we're going through emergency management and making sure that our people are trained on EMDs. And that one, we really don't have a choice on.
We don't have a choice on, because what, we're on one of two counties in the state that's not doing this. You know, I mean, this is, this is not mandated, but I mean, this is no brainer. This has got to be done.
Right. The Edgewood funding we talked about is, is that will no longer be Edgewood funding. We will change that into a half-million-dollar addition to small capital. The COLA, there is no COLA recommended in this budget. There is no merit recommended in this budget. Also, we originally, I think I mentioned to most of you today, before COVID, we were looking at setting aside 500,000 additional in the school system, small capital as a contingency, but we didn't realize that was in there until Allison did a deep dive in the budget over the weekend. We forgot we didn't take it out, so that 500,000 can be removed. One of the biggest things.
But aren't we putting that back in?
Well, that is the, the quote-unquote Edgewood. This was additional. This was above and beyond.
Oh, this is beyond?
Yeah. Well, again, this, if you were looking at the COVID, we, this was pre-COVID. Well, again, this, if you were looking at the COVID, we, this was pre-COVID, we put it in pre-COVID.
Okay.
So we can remove that. Outside agency funding. One of the things, and, and I hate to do this outside agencies, but we needed to look at a reduction, and this is just taking 10% off the top for all outside agencies. Did not go through and, and evaluate if it was a valid or not valid, just went a straight 10%, tried to be equitable and fair to all. Then you can see the cut to Wayne Net, which is 469,000. Travel, meals, and lodging. What we did with travel, meals, and lodging is we reduced across the board, everybody 50%. Thought process was that people are going to do more things by Zoom, more things by remote and web access. Might as well, you know, that was an easy place, and again, you may have issues such as inspections that may come back with a budget amendment, but we had to go just say 50% from everybody, so we're trying to be equitable across the board on that.
That's all county employees?
Yes, sir.
Including ours.
Sir.
So the commissioner's got a 50% cut in this also?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, this is everybody.
Yes, sir. This is, if you had a travel and training line item in our department, it was cut 50%. And then next is what, a recommendation for an increase for EMS salaries after our salary study that
Salary adjusters.
Salary.
I had a question on the outside agency funding. I don't have a problem with, with the cuts, but do we not have a, aren't we under a contract obligation with Watch? And are we not under one with literacy connections? I know we did one for Watch. I think this was the last year of that.
I think the agreement was that they were supposed to be getting an increase to bring them back up.
A $5,000?
Yeah, a $5,000 increase. I don't think there was any discussion about what would happen if there was a decrease, and the reason why I did include Watch in this, if we're doing it across the board, we need to do it across the board.
And I don't have a problem with that. I'm just wanting to make sure that there's not anything in place to prohibit us.
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
Well, Mr. Parker, Mr. Parker may know something, because you were a member of the, remember the agreement that we had, you know?
I think it was, the agreement was among the board members, not
You're, you're right. There was nothing in writing between us and Watch.
Okay.
It was a matter in which I withdrew my objections to the cuts.
We, we, last year, if you remember last year's budget, I think Watch and the museum were the only two nonprofits that got an increase. So, but, but this year, there would be, you know, just a, a straight 10% across.
I'm, I'm good with it. I just want to make sure we're covered, okay?
Yes, sir.
I'm fine.
We're going to have reduced revenues. We cannot increase property taxes. We're in a squeeze like every county, period.
And there is no recommendation for a property tax increase?
Now, help me read this list that you have here. You've got down here at the very bottom, negative 522087. The bottom figure. What does that mean?
If you do all the things in the far right-hand corner, you would, we would use no fund balance, and in fact, but we have to reduce our revenues or make a balance.
You would not use any
Fund balance at all.
Zero fund balance.
Repeat what you said again, I just found a small right.
What we would probably do with that, if we were that, would be put that in a contingency. We would put that to balance it off. You just have a contingency of 500,000.
And we need some contingency to cover us if we get this school grant of the one point. Of the loss of the, the lottery dollars. We would need some contingency there.
It had to come from somewhere, yes, sir.
Because I think we're going to get the grant. I mean, we're going to put some pressure on some folks up in Raleigh to do that, because we need the school. And if we, if we got $9 million of free money, we'll just have
And, and I, I do want to say, th- these are unprecedented times.
It is.
These are tough cuts.
Yeah.
But it, these are cuts, and, and, and we've talked to staff, and, and I appreciate Janice and Chip and Allison, and we, we really have put our heads together to look at every way to cut, but also try to be equitable as well, and, and if you talk to our employees, they understand. They're, they are grateful to have a job. They are very happy to have a job, you know. You have to remember, we've had some increases as well. Health insurance went up 8.9%, you know, that's already in your budget book. You know, state retirement went up an additional 2%, that's 440,000.
That's outright.
Yeah, about an additional, that's a fixed cost. So along with the increases that we've had, we're still making a lot of cuts. So it, it's, it's been a weird time, but I appreciate everybody's willingness to really try to do the right thing.
Let me ask the question, I want to make sure that, uh, know, uh, the way, of course, something travels had a chance. When we're talking about getting the money for the schools, we are talking about the school that was on the priority list.
Freedom, frame of money.
Trying to make sure that, no
We're not going in that department.
You know, I, you know, I didn't want to make, make sure there hadn't been some telephone call or something I missed. I just wanted to make sure.
The only, the only discussion was Greenwood, and remember, we applied for that additional money from the feds.
Feds.
However, there's only $50 million throughout
In the whole country.
All military schools, and I think we asked for 10.
Yeah.
I doubt we're going to get it.
But, but as, as, I told Allison, we're on the list. We're, we're, we're on a list, so.
That's right. I understand if you don't even get on the list, you might, you might even consider it.
Yes, sir. But let me also say, this is not the be-all and end-all of cuts or additions. This is not the be-all. This is really what's recommended at this point moving forward.
Well, I, I think you're leaving out the fact that during your budget discussions with individual departments, you found other cuts as well, and those are incorporated into your recommended budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's not what they asked for.
I, I did have a conversation yesterday with the chairman of
Gateway.
Gateway. Years ago, we solved the deficit that the county portion of Gateway had by redoing the percentages that they had. That was definitely to the favor of the city and definitely to the detriment of the county. And in doing so, they built up a huge reserve, in fact. Can you find out what that reserve is?
Sure.
That reserve is rather large, but in addition to that, they are charging our county budget every time there's a no-show out there in the community. So if DSS schedules a pickup to Gateway, and they go to pick that individual up, and that person's sick or for whatever reason does not ride, then the county gets charged for that trip. Now, some of these trips are up to $400. So if that person is, as example, was scheduled to take a trip to Greival for dialysis or whatever, and it's $400, and they don't make the trip, they've been charging the county budget $400. Even though they don't go.
Who loaded that in?
We just found out about it.
We just found out about it. This has been going on for years.
Going on for years.
And it has amounted to about 40 grand.
Yeah, how much was it last year?
Sixty.
Yeah.
Sixty, Allison.
That's right. Did I show it?
Thirty-three thousand last year, and I think 20-some so far this year, but we expect it to be.
Twenty-eight, thirty. It's 28, it's 28,000 this year so far. So, you know, this is, this is, uh, this is money we shouldn't
Figured out how Gateway's making profit now then.
Well, well, that's
They were already making a profit.
Yeah.
So at any rate, what I am asking is that we give a nod to the county manager to inform them that we no longer are going to pay for that. Those departments are going to have to handle something with them, but we're not going to pay for it. It's not right that we, first of all, we're already, we're already paying for it.
Yeah.
Well, it's like double dipping.
One of the things we do have in the budget, there is, they're, they get new vans. We're required to pay the 10% match for the vans, and it's $60,000.
That's $60,000
Right.
For new vans in addition to the $40,000 that we got to pay.
Well, wouldn't
We need to eliminate that.
We don't, we're not talking about negotiating that fee. We're talking about eliminating it.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
The most, the most that anything ought to happen like that is, is the exact amount of gas it took to go out there to come back.
Well, I agree, I agree.
And the hourly rate that the man who was driving the vehicle. Some of these municipalities, some one in particular, you know, person miss, cut, pay in the water bill. They got this enormous fee that you got to put it back on. That's like maybe some kind of a profit. You don't get your grass cut on some lot. They charge this, it's crazy. We don't need to run away costs, run away charges, run away fees, I run away fees and to the tax.
I couldn't believe it.
Are you finding that out?
Um, I thought I had a copy of their audit, but I did not have it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thirty-two thousand dollars last year.
Now, can I ask you, who is paying for the SROs?
We're paying part of it. There's grant funding, we're paying part of it.
Part of the grants are going to run out, and you're not going to do away with the SROs.
I can't remember the, right now, the cost of the SROs.
School resource officers.
School resource.
Yes, 710,000 a year.
You what?
It's seven to ten from the school system that they get from the state, but that doesn't cover the whole program.
No.
Does the school give those dollars back to the county?
Yes, sir.
So we do get the dollars.
Right.
We have a contract to them for the services, and it's attached to it at that amount, that's 710,000 dollars.
But each one of them has got to be here with them.
Well, you know, I constantly keep hearing how Wayne County government is not funding our school system. But you got to put the whole package together, and school resource officers is one of those, so we need to determine how much the overall cost is, how much we get reimbursed, and then how much the county actually pays. Because that is an actual, a funding from us to them.
If, if you remember after, was it the shootings in Lakeland, Florida?
Yeah.
We added four additional, that happened right at by the time. School security was a very big issue. We added on four additional SROs at that time.
Yeah.
There it is.
So you will see on your screen, um, this, that total, grand total at the far right is what the total is for the school resource officer departments. 1,302,795, and then when I subtract the funding we receive from the schools, that gives us a balance of 592,795, so close to 600,000 that the county is putting into that program every year.
But you see, that's kind of fallen between the cracks. We're not getting any credit for that additional 600,000 dollars. They don't, they don't know it. So we have got to make sure that our message gets out there of how much we actually are, whether or not it's that or any additional funding in addition to the other dollars that we're paying them.
One question I need to ask. We need to let the nonprofits know of the change in funding before the public hearing? Are we, are we live, are we live right now?
Yes, sir.
They know it. When I leave here, I'm going by USA or get my number checked.
We will send out letters to all nonprofits, and you will be getting phone calls. Just, but, you know.
I've already had a discussion with systems.
And how did that discussion go?
She asked how it was going, and I said, I don't know yet, but it's funny.
It's funny.
That is totally going to be a really tough one, you know, every time I did it. As a matter of fact, I had gone over there to sign a document, and then I came over here and met with them. That's what I learned. Full commit is a complete shock to her.
But we would, we have budget books ready for you. We can meet again and go through the book as much as you would like to. Or if there's additional cuts that you feel like need to be made, we'll be glad to look at that as well. If you need additional information on the CIP, we can have our department heads come and give you those explanations as well.
Do you have, obviously, you mess to have it, there's some of the whole book.
Yes, sir.
Electronic book.
Yes, sir.
That I can access from alone.
Yes, sir. Well, is it, is it going to be, I thought it was going to work.
We, so, I can get it for you.
I didn't really want to have to drag that.
Okay.
Well, that'd be great. Would you send me one too?
Yes, sir.
And me, and me too.
We'll send, we'll send an electronic copy to everyone, and it, it'll be like your, just your revenues and expenditures, like if you, it won't have all the tabs, but you know, I mean, you can search by word and things like that.
I just don't want to have to drag that.
Sure, okay. We can get that for you.
So that we're like mine. You are now going to compile your recommended budget.
Yes.
And you're going to present that to us
At the budget public hearing.
At the budget public hearing.
Yes.
But you could release that whenever you compile it.
Yes.
So you could release it tomorrow if you get it right.
Yes.
And I would do that. I'd go ahead and get it released. The sooner you release it, because you'd have to have it out there for some public comment. Right? So how many days do we have to have it released before the, the public hearing?
When you set this public hearing, you're going to say that it has been released and it's on your website.
And it will be on the website?
By the time the thing is published.
Today?
No, not today, but by, it'll be published on Friday. And so, um, by some, before we publish it, it will be on there by Friday before it's published.
It will be on there?
It will be on the website sometime Friday before the public hearing notice is published in the
Oh, okay, okay.
Because it, it's still going to take a little while to go back and, and add.
Understood. And with that being said, then on, we'll have the public hearing, have comments, at which will be on June the 2nd.
Yes, sir.
And if any commissioner has discovered two or $300,000 in there, we can make adjustments before actually approving and adopting the budget.
And, and if there's additional meetings that you feel like you need?
Oh, no, I don't think we need to have any more meetings. I mean, but what I'm saying is, we can still modify
Yes, at any time between June 2nd and June 30th.
Or until we vote it. We're going to vote it in the second meeting in June.
Oh, well, that's, but you, even at, as long as it's something by June 30th, we're good.
Okay.
We haven't even, we haven't even extended it.
That was an interim budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be just at the level you're doing now.
Yeah. I don't want to do that. I just remembered us doing that. I would say I would say this, uh, if you would assist us, because you're right. We're going to get a lot of pushback on the nonprofits. And I would ask that you take another strong look and see if there's any way that we can find the additional 100,000 cut somewhere else in order to maintain those. And if they're, if they're not there, they're not there.
An option would be if we have the half million dollars in contingency, have a 400,000 contingency.
And I don't like that option. I don't really think we're going to get them back pushed back.
But to have the half million in contingency, you got to do away with all the CIP.
Well, not only that, but I'm telling you, we're going to get this grant on this Fremont school. And I had no idea that we're going to give up the funding on lottery this coming up budget.
If, if we add back the 30,000 from DSS on, on no-shows, and there may be a couple of things, we'll, we'll take-
See whether or not, yeah, just take a look.
So your, your recommendation would be, or not recommendation, your request would be if we could look at not cutting the non, or keeping not an increase for any of the nonprofits, keeping them the same, that would be your preference.
Yeah, and I know there's people in the community going to where I say, did that out of your cup from Joe Daughery?
I wouldn't know, yeah. But I think we do need to exactly. We'll, we'll, we'll check.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that if they can find a way around it, you guys.
We'll, we'll check and see.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Under that Viper update, this 12,500, it was already the budget.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, that's, so you, you don't have as much as you-
That's right. What, and again, we, we got to get back through and, and there, there's some moving around things.
I mean, that would be helped, I mean-
Yes, sir.
It helps some, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, y'all can work it out, right?
We'll try to work it out.
Anybody else?
Yeah, right quick.
Yeah, not, nothing to do with the budget. The letter that we got from the lady concerned about the calls for, for the EMS.
Yeah.
Uh, I love technology sometimes. There's been no code calls in her neighborhood. Our people has verified that. We only have one fire department in the county that, that has a first responder program. That's Marmak. She does not live in Marmak's district. Uh, her last name and her husband's last name is different. I mean, you know.
Okay.
Just for information. Our people's on top of it. Dave's got a place, plan in place.
Is, is, is anybody have anything else? Now, what we got to do is, um, we, we have to have, um, we got to set up a mo, we, I need a motion for the public hearing for June the 2nd at 9:30 a.m. on our budget.
Yes, sir.
I need, need for that.
I do.
Okay. Have a motion, uh, for the public hearing for our budget for June 2nd at 9:30 a.m. All in favor, raise your hand please. We are unanimous. Uh, is there any other business to come before the commissioners? Anyone have any comment?
I do.
Yes.
I just want to let you know, uh, fellow commissioners, that the reason we're not here for hours going through this budget is that I did attend the work sessions. I was very cognizant of y'all's time. And I did attend the work sessions, and I got a lot of my questions answered at that time. And I appreciate the county manager inviting me. Uh, he even fed me breakfast and lunch. But we, uh, the chairman was also there, uh, as well. And we gained a lot of information talking directly with the department heads. So, uh, that's one of the reasons why I'm not going through the entire budget we really already have.
Well, we did, we spent the time necessary and, uh, did the groundwork.
And Bill said he didn't want to sit here for three or four hours going through it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have that much energy anymore.
Okay, if anyone have any others? Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.